This one's backup.
I'm good.
All right, six thirty, we're going to know anything more, start the pledge, please.
Pledge is to defy the United States of America into the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, question, question.
Honor, takes this flag from our holy place to be Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Eric Green, my name is in perfect.
Yeah, we got you.
The Lord has taken me this time, um, thank you for bringing us all here safely, um, thank you for taking care of us through the storm last week and for those that helped us out, and just thank you for keeping your heads in protection on us. Uh, just pray that you be with us tonight and let us make wise decisions and, um, the best decisions for everybody. Christ have a prayer again.
Amen. Moving to number three.
Um, Allison Sanders, city secretary, now to the roll call, um, Corey Glassburn.
Here.
Uh, Eric Stevens, city manager.
I'm here.
Colby Paper.
Here.
Will Rutledge is not here. Brad Snooty.
Here.
Charlie Scarborough, here. And Kim Lamps is not here.
Well, they've all reached out to us and I haven't excused absence.
That brings us to number four, citizen comments.
We don't have any citizen comments tonight.
That will bring us to number five, I don't think we need any questions.
So sorry.
You're okay.
Come on.
You're fine.
Do we have one more roll call on there?
Yeah.
Um, Julie Vasquez, uh, city attorney, is here.
All right, moving to the, uh, I don't think we need any questions.
Uh, I'll let you go first, John, because I'm the, 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 our assistant chief and he's in close.
Assistant archie from the department since two thousand and eight. Um, so last month in January, we had seventeen calls, we had seven EMS, seven, or, or medical accidents, three grass fires, and three calls that were canceled, canceled and routed. Um, at this time, we're still, uh, receiving money to purchase PPE, that's grant money, for person PPE is, uh, probably became a bad line to up here. Uh, we have had two new members join since last month. And we have began a comprehensive truck management program tracking, tracking the truck usage over the ramp pass.
John, any questions for me?
And John's going to talk a little bit about some of our programs.
John, Sergeant Steve Captain, Lakeside City Volunteer Fire Department, we just have a, a couple of more things. Uh, Lakeside fifteen, uh, it's a new project for us, if you look through the window, you'll see a big green truck parked in there. Uh, that truck was awarded to us by Texas Forest Service, uh, the truck is free. Um, so it arrives and then Forest Service gives us a twenty thousand dollar grant, um, to outfit that truck, so. Um, it should be heading off to the builder soon, um, so as soon as it goes off to the builder. And then comes home, the truck will come home with a twelve hundred gallon ca- uh, capability. We'll consider it to be a heavy brush and a tactical tender, meaning that it can provide water to trucks, uh, further out in the field. Um, it's also going to have onboard, uh, onboard sprayers, um, that can be operated from the cab, so one individual can actually develop a lot of fire for something. Um, it's going to be a, a good piece of equipment for us. Um, next up, uh, one of the items that, uh, Chief Hare wanted me to, to bounce off of the council is, is start thinking about dates for the garage sale, um, for the citywide garage sale, um, we've started to kind of think about it as far as the fire department goes. Um, we'd like for the city to start kind of thinking about it as well, to see what dates will work in, in May or June.
What, what do you need from us on that?
What dates you think, give me like two, two dates that would be good for, like a good Saturday, that would be, you know, avoiding all the stuff obviously that's going on with everybody's lives, um, we just need to start kind of pinning down, um, when we can start getting our advertising on.
All right, council vote for it in our votes, it's, in the past, the city's never been involved in that, is that correct?
Correct. I mean, we have had some, you know, we never said.
As far as, we just have to be y'all's senators, we y'all can be the dates. If that's due to the council, unless you want to be on hold.
Yep, we just want to make a ready team, make sure there wasn't any progress.
Okay.
Um, next item, we, this was kind of an emergency management item, but the fire department's participating as well, actually both of these. Uh, if you remember, we talked about the Firewise program, the Ready Seco program, both of them are programs designed to, uh, increase citizen awareness as far as grass fires and dangers, et cetera. Uh, Lakeside City Volunteer Fire Department is now currently fifth in the country, um, for amount of hours, uh, participating in the Ready Seco program.
Cool.
Um, so that's the entire country, we're number five now, and we're starting to gain, um, folks, so. That's hours used, uh, informing the public, that's hours actually spent training, uh, inside our station, and that's hours used, um, burns that we, we perform for the, uh, for outside landowners to reduce wildfire risk, so, um, we're starting to report those hours, and like I said, we're, we're at the fifth right now, so pretty proud of that. And lastly, uh, and this was kind of a emergency management type thing that we discussed last meeting, we discussed the, uh, kind of a partnership between the city and emergency management and the fire department as far as generators, um, kind of acquiring items like that. At this time, the fire department has, uh, it's, it's a light part, um, that's currently reserved, the light part is a dual purpose, um, piece of equipment, and that it'll provide not only flood lighting, um, for scenes incidents, but also for special events, um, but it also comes with an onboard seven K generator, um, so in the event we do lose power, um, for a long period of time, or we lose, uh, power in the neighborhood, uh, if we have individuals that, that have medical needs, we'll be able to park that, that piece of equipment in their driveway and be able to keep them rolling, so. Now, that, that piece of equipment currently is reserved through, uh, Surplus Commission. That's all I have, does anybody have any questions?
I think it's Tom, you're good.
Uh, city manager, I got a few things, first, I want to welcome, uh, this is Raven with the Archer County News, she's their college intern, and so you might be seeing her in the next few meetings and stuff like that, so we're definitely glad she's here, and thank you for coming, Raven.
Raven, welcome.
Um, other thing, I know we've been talking about Cobalt Ridge, um, he got back with me and with the storm and his main tower being down, trying to get that up, he sort of wanted to, didn't get back with me on all the answers, and he wanted to post on it till next month. So it, it's not on there, that's why it's not on there, um.
I do have a couple more questions for him, so I'm always, you know, you know, or talk about it now.
Sure, if you just want to email him, because I'm just sending him a text, and he's coming back and telling me all his stuff, and so, um, and he, he definitely wants to come, it just didn't work out this go around, this month. Uh, other good news, uh, old city hall that we've been trying to rent, uh, for months, Leambernet, anchored, anchored realty, anchored realty, reached out to me and they do have somebody that is, uh, wanting to rent it, um, I think they're going to start March first, it's a local business, not in Lakeside City, I think it's a business within Woodstock Falls, um, and all they're needing is just office space, there's no storefront, anything like that, and so, um, they submitted their application, she was reviewing it as of four o'clock when I talked to her, and they're going to send it over to us, and so, um, definitely excited about that, so that building is now a source of revenue for us and stuff like that. That, so we're excited about that, um, election, uh, we did have some two people, um, so what we had up for position was District One Place Two, which is Willie, um, he put in his application, and Jerry Bradshaw put in his application, so there'll be a runoff between them two. Uh, there's also one for Kim Williams, uh, the outlaw's positions, Kim Williams and Mike Murphy, so there'll be a runoff there. Charla, um, and won't be with us after May, Pamela Davis put in to run for her position, and she's going to run on the post, so, um, I'm sure we'll have a going away party and everything else for Charla, whatever, a full party in the free, unfreeze. Uh, so yeah, we will, May first will definitely be election, um, I did have a call, and I haven't confirmed it yet. I think Holiday ISD School Board is also going to have an election, I think they're about the only one that decides if it's going to have an election, and they're sort of wanting to piggyback off of us, so where Lakeside City people that will vote for Holiday ISD can vote up here, instead of having to drive all the way to Holiday ISD, so you'll see that on there, uh, most likely. Um, other than that, uh, that's all I really got for, uh, update, most of the other stuff that I want to discuss will be in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Here's number six, consent agenda. I'll hand it to you when I, when it's ready.
I make a motion, approve the January sixteen meeting, sent along with the financial statement, and then, and then, first by emergency.
Mr. Senator makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Carver, second, sit, discussion between council, all of the voters say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion passes, brings to, under seven, with the agenda seven, eight.
Uh, yes, this is discussion consideration on approving and continuing the declaration of disaster signed by Mayor Glassburn, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, declaring it's a local disaster, um, let me explain some stuff, just so everybody's understanding, um, this didn't get posted until yesterday, the reason they didn't get posted till yesterday, obviously Corey and I spoke on Tuesday, and he brought up the idea, and we said, yes, obviously, uh, Allison here is our city secretary, and she couldn't get up there to the office, she doesn't live in Lakeside City, and so, um, for her to be able to receive it, post it, and put the city seal on it, we had to wait till she got here, so that's the thing. Um, when we declare it and when it happens, doesn't really matter, I talked to you, Lance, lady, with Texas Department, Emergency Management, the governor's declaration for us, uh, when he issued it on Monday, covered us for the public assistance, and there's been some confusion, there's two types of assistance that FEMA does, public assistance and individual assistance, um, the decli- the government habit allowed us as a city to be eligible for public assistance, and so we can get any kind of infrastructure, roads, stuff like that, that was damaged by the storm and stuff like that, that's how, now the individual assistance, we posted on our website, our social media, and I know Archer County's trying to push it, I know the county commissioner's trying to push it, um, Archer County has not been declared one of the counties, and there was originally a seventy-seven, uh, counties, and then thirty more, thirty-one more got done, and that's up to the president to declare it, we need everybody to go online and fill out that survey and get us in there, and we're still, I know Judge Jackson was in the process of this afternoon declaring Archer County as a, um, disaster, but I don't know if it was finalized, um, so it's not up to us for the individual assistance, that's everybody going online, filling that thing out, and then hopefully, we have enough response to where the president will declare Archer County a disaster, and then that will help out forward funding now. From what I understand, speaking with it, that's not going to, insurance, homeowners insurance should cover whatever damage you have, I think FEMA sort of helps pick out what they don't cover, um, so that, uh, also in that disaster that Corey put, we waived, normally if you do any kind of plumbing, uh, stuff, you gotta have a plumbing permit, and there's to be inspected and everything else by us, um, we're still inspecting, we're just waiving permit fees, so nobody has to wait to come in and have a busted water pipe fixed, a hot water heater, anything like that. Um, and the mayor, when he declares this, it's only good for seven days from the time he declares, which was on the eighteenth of noon.
It's actually the seventeenth.
Seventeen, and so, um, this will go up, whatever, seven days from now, at noon.
Biggest today.
Yeah, today, so I would recommend furthering it on for another, until next month, that's the thing, that way, people can still take advantage of not having to pull the plumbing permit and stuff like that for that.
So pretty much, when I declare it, it's good for seven days, then council has to extend it.
Yep, exactly. So I would need, this is all time to discuss if you want to extend it, and then I would need a motion extending it.
Yeah, my thoughts are, I mean, some people are just now, I mean, some things are still thawing out, you know, we don't even know the damage of all this, so I would, you know, at least do maybe another thirty days from today, that would give them thirty-seven total days that it would be total for, just to try to give it kind of relief for citizens in our community. Can I get an answer, John? Is this, is this just for plumbing, or is it?
It's just for plumbing, that's all, because most of the damage done was plumbing, we, I haven't had any reports of any electrical damage, the only electrical damage was to the primary su- power supply, that was on course, I haven't heard of anybody personally had any. Have y'all heard of any?
I make a motion, we extend the declaring a local disaster, thirty days from today to date.
Mr. Hare brings the motion, is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Carver, second, sit, discussion between council, all of the voters say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion passes, brings to seven B.
Uh, discussion consideration on the community center grand opening, originally, we were going to have it Saturday, but we were in no place to have it, I mean, the fire department was still a mess, cleaning up, they were going, they were, and then all of our guys didn't have a chance to get some stuff done, so when do y'all want to have that, that's something to discuss, and I know Archer County News is wanting to know, and a couple other people. If y'all want to have it, how y'all want to do it, or whatever, I know what we had planned was something pretty simple, just from like eleven to two, people come up here, see it, um, look at it, and we're going to try to get a couple vendors up here, like the fire department either do a few things, have some drawings and stuff like that, um, we can keep it that way, or if y'all are, whatever y'all decide, which else is called. We're also going to do a virtual tour, the day we have, we'll release the virtual tour, so people can see it virtually too, online.
Need to work around the spring right there.
Yeah, we'll be the thirteenth and the twentieth, so really on the mark, looking at the sixth or the twenty-seventh. Would the, would the sixth be too soon for you?
Is there a call, man?
What about y'all? The fire department, what is that, do you feel?
Let me give my count, sorry, I don't know when the first Monday is, so, um, they'll really give us about four days to plan something. We'll be on the first.
Four days.
Well, you're having it March the sixth, right, they don't want to do this Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, where they're just planning something.
Then we, um, we're going to be on the first, that's our next meeting.
Twenty-seven. I don't know, that day, take off. They're not even going to take it, or whatever.
The network gets crazy.
I like when they have it, like the sixth, but it doesn't have, or get it, uh.
The beginning and the ending has been great, which will be a problem for some people, so let's just do the twenty-seven.
Over.
Be not available on the twenty-seven.
I like the end of spring right upon the, I mean, the start might be a little tricky, but the end of it, maybe, okay, it's kind of winding down, everybody's vacation. We don't have to, do we have to have it on Saturday, do we have it Sunday afternoon?
You don't have to have it on, you can have it any day, if you want to do it one afternoon, or one day during the day, in the week, uh.
First weekend, no one's coming home, everybody.
Sure.
You give twenty-eight, are you done already?
I'm not every weekend, aren't you?
Oh, all, we could have the sixth, yeah.
So what different planning would y'all need to do in order to have it on the sixth?
We need to, we need to clean up meeting and stuff like that, so. I don't, I don't remember anything to get previously planned, Josh, yeah, I have to look back at our minutes.
Would y'all have?
I mean, is it just because though?
If, if you want to do it on the, on that seventh, the seventh, you know.
What if we get on Sunday the seventh?
That probably, you know, one of they would be not, because on.
Like a Sunday afternoon?
Yeah, because we can talk about it on Monday, and we can start it through all the week, and then we can do work maybe on Friday or Saturday.
I think keep pushing it back further, and it not be, be as big of a hurrah, you know, that's the grand opening, we should be able to bring in Ryan Day, if we could.
So, we could, we could, I don't know.
Not that simple.
I don't know, because it's the one that actually, well, I have a murder be there, I mean. We have hockey every Saturday, Sunday.
It's the sixth.
Pretty much, yeah, we're, yeah, yeah.
We can get, I, I, we can get.
One, six, we can get with that. Okay.
One, two, ten, two, one, two.
What could we do, eleven to one, Harry?
Eleven to.
Eleven to two?
Eleven, eleven to.
All right, that brings us to seven C.
Uh, discussion consideration on purchase of large generation facility, city utility infrastructure, something, uh, originally, in February of last year, we put in for a grant to FEMA from the disaster forty-four sixteen for this, and it looked like it was a pretty good deal, but then, we all know, March came, COVID hit, and then all government funding got sucked out and got focused towards COVID, so we were not able to get the grant for the generator, the power of this, and then that grant, and we wrote, it included the switches, the generator, the whole nine yards, and so we didn't get approved for that. So currently, the building doesn't have the switches or anything like that, um, I got two electricians giving me estimates to put switches out there, and it'd be one of those ones, it'd be manual switches, to where if we had a generator, trailer generator, something like that, we could hook up to it and, uh, bring it on trailer and hook up to it, that way we, the end goal is to do a permanent one, uh, but it's just trying to find one and, and get all that cost in and everything else, um, so this generator that we're looking at is from the surplus thing, it's a thirty KW, um, and it wouldn't be enough to run the whole building, um, they're telling us for, uh, to run the whole building with no stress or anything, we're looking at a hundred fifty KW generator, and this is a thirty KW, but this would be able to run just the community center and the lights and stuff like that, keep that up and operational, so if we do lose power, again, we could run this, people could come up there, charge their equipment, everything else, uh, but they need to have a more place to stay, and that, and I wouldn't run the heaters for this side of the building or anything like that, I mean, obviously, they can still get, I mean, we were thinking about keeping this going. Uh, so that's where we're sort of looking at the thirty KW on the trailer, it would also be for, um, over at the water plant on the east side, and if those pumps were ever to go out, those have never been set up for any kind of, uh, auxiliary power, generated power, um, so it would also be for if we ever, thank goodness, during the storm, seven kept, and one of the top of things had the water tower full, the ground storage full, when we lost power, um, but if we didn't get power, it was stored to those things, and it could have got critical for us, and so, um, the trailer generator would also be for, if we need to run our pumps, anything out of the, you know, it's portable, and that's the whole end game on this, to where we can take it to wherever we need to. Uh, John and I have looked, and we found, there's a, a few of them there, the surplus for the federal and state property down there, Fort Worth, they have a thirty KW one with about five hundred hours on it, there's one with eight hours that we would love to get, but somebody else already has it, so there's, um, this is it right here, and it has about five hundred hours, it's thirty K, and they're asking three thousand for it, which is a killer deal, if you know what those things cost brand new, um, three thousand is a fraction of the cost. So, is this something y'all want to look at pursuing, uh, go ahead with the purchase, or y'all, what are y'all's thoughts, discussions?
My thought is, we definitely need to, for three thousand dollars compared to what that thing costs, it's portable, we can still look for grants, maybe in the future, the power that's built into it, get on the hundred fifty, but we can't afford that right now, others will tell what that would cost. I'm, I'm all in favor of this one.
This is one of the, this area?
Yeah, another one of the ideas that we had, I don't want to say, promise it, it was a good idea, was we got an exceptionally large generator over here at the lift station, we would look at taking that, and it's way overpowered for that lift station, we're trying to look at seeing if we can move that one to over here to power this, and then use that thirty KW to power the lift station, um, but I'm no engineer, electrical engineer, anything else like that, and so we've got calls until, and they're supposed to come out this week and let us know what all our options.
From what I'm understanding, no matter what the options are, whether we use this one for here, or utilize that bigger one for here, this one is your purchase.
I would, I would definitely recommend it, because we could, it just opens up a lot of doors for us, to where we ever have issues out there at the lagoon, we can take this generator out there, if we have issues at the park, if we have issues anywhere, it's portable, we can take it around, do what we need to with it. Okay, I'm ready. Sure.
Um, the other thing is with this, with Surplus Commission, it's a thirty day, um, money back type deal, we don't actually have to pay for thirty days, so I can go out there and pick it up, bring it here, have Eric's guys go through it, make sure that it's mechanically sound, and it's doing what we need it to do without us actually making any kind of a payment, and then if it doesn't do what we needed to do, we can just drop it right back to Ford, if you drop it off with them, it's no problem at all.
And actually, Keith's guys that are operating, they came out, and I know some guys that do that, would be unusual help with it, like getting them back on something like that.
Does that, do they have air brakes on it? Supposed to got air brakes. So we're going to be able to use that with our trucks?
In, inside the city, inside the city, yeah, that'd be fine.
Are you releasing their brakes?
There are released, yeah, I'm sure they're already released, I think, I think all of that military stuff, I think that's a good question, I, I would assume that all, I'm just assuming, all that military stuff comes with air brakes, and then they disconnect it, I mean, like the one that I had from Warren Cat, it's that size, and it doesn't have air brakes on it.
Oh, we have, I mean, our trucks will be able to fly out.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm, I'm, we're just worried about being able, no, no.
My role to do with my, yeah, I'm very sad.
Well, just five hundred dollars is nothing on that. Yeah.
Well, I think, the thing is, is that there's, there's three of them exactly like that one, there's one that had eight hours, this one has five hundred, and there's a third one that has eight hundred, and when I contacted Surplus, I emailed them on the weekend, so just to reserve it, you know, just pending, obviously, the decision, and, um, yesterday morning, I called them, and they were like, yeah, okay, and they were already, two of them, three of them already reserved, and it been reserved like earlier, last week, so they're gonna, these things are going to go like hotcakes right out of the surplus yard, especially with everything that's going on in the state right now.
I think it's something we absolutely need.
Okay.
It's multi-purpose tool, it's a good investment for the city.
I intend a motion, that's what y'all want to do.
I'll make a motion, purchase, take a degenerate for three thousand dollars.
So he makes the motion, is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Hare, second, sit, discussion between council, all of the voters say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion passes. Eric and John, please do our work on the, and Brad, thanks for being involved too, and I, as well. That brings us to seven B.
Uh, this is the discussion consideration on COVID nineteen status updates, only this is first with everything from winter storm, so we got moved down, do y'all have anything COVID related y'all want to do, bring up or discuss? Cool.
Moving on to seven E.
Discussion consideration on street repairs is something we started last month, um, and then, I know Corey and I have been in talks with Dean, hint, our city engineer, uh, they came out the Friday before the storm came, and. And I'm sure a lot of y'all see the orange stuff. I'm just gonna read y'all the email that he sent to me, uh. Him and Kim spent Friday afternoon marking areas in the street, and this is Kim, his intern, not our Kim. Um, marking areas that had pavement problems. Uh, they got most of east done, and then they were working on west, and then about four forty-five, traffic became heavy and they couldn't finish it. Uh, soon as the roads cleared up, they'd be back out here. And he, here's, here's a thing that he wanted us to discuss tonight. We found that approximately half of the drive entrances, that's fifty percent of everybody's home, uh, the J six street has pavement issues. And we need to discuss how the city would like to proceed regarding those repairs. We generally didn't mark these unless there was a base failure that extended well into the street or beyond the driveway. So what he's saying is right in front of everybody's driveway, where everybody turns in and out, there's a lot of.
To work.
Stuff like that, and they really didn't mark it unless it was a big broad area, uh, that went further past people's driveway and stuff like that. Is that something that y'all are wanting to address, those little things? Or y'all wanting to do the main base repairs where we have the most, uh, stuff? And, um. And so, sorry, ADH he kicked in. He also said, as soon as the weather clears up and the streets came in, he, they would come in and finish the west side. And then once that is complete, their survey crew could come in and measure and locate them, and they would be able to come up with plans and tell us an exact. He was gonna come up with a spreadsheet to develop the cost opinion according to our budget. So, once, I'm assuming what he's gonna have to do is come back out here and re-mark the orange, and then their survey crew will come out and measure everything. They'll come up with the cost calculation, and then depending upon our budget, we'll get as much of it done as we can.
It looked like most of the orange paint stuff, from what I can see, most of it's still there. Um, I, for me personally, I just don't, I think, I understand the part in front of everybody's driveway, but even if we fix it, guess what, that's what's gonna happen again. I think our money, personally, I think it's better spent fixing the base and the, the problem, the, the things we just have, keep having, putting Band-Aids on it, it's not gonna. We never fix the issue, I mean, I think fixing funded driveways, we're always gonna have the issue with it.
Okay.
I mean, but I, I really think council.
I'm like just looking at what my eyes sees, it's the sides and, and all that, I haven't really noticed anything on driveways. I'm sure there is something, but I mean, I'm not a professional, but I can see what does need, and I haven't really seen those problems.
And just because they marked it in orange, I don't want everybody thinking it's gonna be repaired. It's, they're marking everything, and then they come back and measure it, and they'll do an engineer cost analysis and say, hey, I think we can get this much done for your own budget, or you can get everything done. It's just, a lot of it depends on how much, when they come back and measure it, how much it's gonna be.
And that's kind of the kicker too, on driveways, whether we can actually afford to do everything in that.
Uh, yeah, so I, I would assume by next month, we will have a, a cost analysis on it and be able to proceed forward with it. Which is perfect timing, if we put it out, let it in March, let, let for thirty days, that means right in April, May, we'll be getting more award of the bid, and that's the perfect time to be doing those repairs.
The council's good, we just, let's, you say, utilize our money first for the big, major repairs and let's see what we have left over to, 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 to. So what does that mean to you forward, as I email states?
Cool.
Alright, that brings us to seven F.
Discussion consideration on solar panel ordinance, I know this is something we talked about last week, I mean, last month. And then we were gonna come up with the finalization. I, I finalized it, and then I sent it in, it's my fault, I was out quite a few days with COVID, and then last week, we were closed due to the weather. So I sort of dropped the ball and gave some stuff to, uh, Julie. She looked at the one that I came up with and had some concerns about it, because there was a lot of stuff that didn't have some stuff on there. So we're gonna finish it, um, and come back, uh, I think, was there anything you would, I mean, some of it was. Those that have already put up solar panels, um, are they grandfathered in, or we can come back and make them change their stuff, sort of?
So some of the concern, it, it's kind of, okay, I, from my understanding at the last meeting, there's people out, there's people who already have them. And so that's kind of why the ordinance needed to be created, just moving forward in the future. So I understand maybe they're kind of gonna be grandfathered in possibly, but in the future, let's say they want a new one, do they, do they have to follow this? Or how does that work if, if it's damaged? Um, another thing I was noticing in the, in the one that was sent over to me is, for example, there's nothing in there that states that an actual permit is required. So maybe you want to include that in there. Um, there's nothing, um, there's nothing that states as far as, there's a little sentence regarding maintenance, but maybe you want to be a little bit more thorough. You know, it has to be ma- maintenance at all times. If it's, if something goes wrong, then you have to replace it or remove it, remove it within a certain timeframe. Just kind of be a little bit more specific so that there's, future issues could be fixed and mitted, but, you know, quickly. Um, also, it's a little, just for me reading it, it's a little hard to understand, just because it's just, I don't know, it's just, I guess, maybe spread out weird a little bit to me. But, um, I think it, I think it's really workable, it's just stuff to be included so that it protects everyone in the future. Yeah.
Yeah, I would say let's, let's just push it off until next month, um, any questions you have, Eric, if you just want to send out to council, and then just make sure you don't, you don't reply, I'll reply just back to him.
Okay.
But I think there's a good point to do this, and I think anytime, personally, anytime it gets.
And I think our end goal on the solar panel is, it's not that we don't want people up, we want people, I mean, we're definitely all for it. We just don't want them, where they're blind anyway, you're driving down the street, or they become an eyesore and stuff like that.
We just want to make sure that we do our.
Solar energy's really taken off, and so before we get ourselves into something to where everybody has it, but we don't have any control over it, we need to get some.
And you just want to be careful too, you don't want, you know, someone installs it, but something goes wrong, it's, you know, they just never decide to replace it or something. It's, it's a good thing to just have it already in there, in case that happens.
So, we'll continue on, and I have a.
Okay, that moves us on to seventeen.
Yeah, discussion consideration on propane alternative fuel tank ordinance. Um, I think all that we're wanting to do on here is, we don't want to, we're, we're not trying to regulate whether you have to bury them, not bury them, put them somewhere. I mean, that's all in the NFPA, that's depending upon your size of tank, how many tanks you got and all that. That's all in there about how close to the house they can be and all that, that's really not us. All we're wanting to do in this ordinance is make it to where you can't put them in the front yard, they have to be from your, front of your house line, back. And then if you're going to put it out there, where it's not in your backyard and covered by your fence, if you're gonna put it out on the side of your house, you're gonna have some kind of little fence to where it can't be seen from the street and everything else like that. Um, and I've been talking with Agent Campbell, I mean, Agent Campbell, Kelly Propane, about what their stuff is. And, um, so what are y'all's thoughts on, on the propane tank? My only concern is, I've seen a few houses that we don't have this ordinance, and so they put up propane tanks, they've not been screened in, they're up at the front. And in my opinion, they're sort of an eyesore when you drive out and look at it. I just don't want more people after this winter storm, putting in propane tanks and stuff like that, alternative fuel methods, and it turns into a eyesore like that for us. And so that's, that's the only reason we're wanting to do this, is just to make sure they, they don't, it keeps the neighborhood looking good. I'm not trying to regulate how many tanks you can have and all that. I mean, they, that all still falls under three feet off the property line, um, everything like that.
I personally think it falls in line with our other beautification ordinance, there's such as no cars parked in the front yard, I mean, it falls in line with that, that kind of stuff. I mean, I, I think it's important that we do keep some kind of beautification out there to make sure we can, we can make it that. I'd like you to take a look at the orders before we do it, just make sure that we don't have any problems, that, that's what the council wants to move forward with that.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Well, we haven't even gained the draft one yet, we just sort of had ideas, wanted to discuss it, and we didn't win the draft one, that y'all weren't on board with this.
I would prefer that, that it can't just be covered by some lattice work, you go down and buy a Home Depot and stick out and cover it.
Yeah.
I mean, it has to be done behind the fence, not just a, you know what I mean?
Right.
By putting lattice work. Screening is kind of a.
Yeah, that's not, yeah, that has to be.
So in the ordinance, y'all want detailed things of how.
Yes.
You gotta cover it up.
And since we only have a few that have happened, are we going to grandfather them in with a certain amount of time that they can be compliant?
That's a good question.
I mean, they're big homes.
I'd, I'd like to say something put around within a year or so.
I would too.
We're just talking privacy fence, something to go around it, so.
I mean, I personally look across at one every day, and it's a beautiful home that they would get, and there's just this missile.
Being right.
Yeah, about there, you know, and so it would be nice.
To have it covered up.
At the ones that have already built out here and have propane, to give them a certain amount of time to, you know, fix it.
And I know, a lot of the cities that I was looking at require them to be buried, and that's their means of not having to have a fence or anything like that. I know we've run into one before to where they got one buried over here, and it's right in the city easement. That, I, I don't like the burying, and it's one of those things from what, uh, Kelly Brooke point tells me is, once you put them in the ground, those tanks are no good anymore. You can't dig them up and put them somewhere else to use them for something else. They, 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 they said, so most of the people are putting them above ground now.
This is about me, no means to deter anybody from using propane in their house.
No.
It's just that seriously, we're just talking about the best of the city and the beautification of it.
Yeah.
I think that's what would do, I think the fence around it would not deter, I think burying would, because that's a whole other cause. And I'm sure if somebody was building a house and they saw that dollar amount, like whenever mine was, you know, electric, so, no, I don't, I don't think it would be, but the fence, I don't think it would be a big deal.
Okay. So we need to have something in that ordinance to, those that are existing have X amount of, are y'all saying three hundred sixty days from the date the ordinance is put in? In, in effect, have they got a year to comply and get a fence built up?
That's how I, did you say, we have three that are?
There's three of them right now that I know of.
So how far back can we go? We're going six months, we're going a year?
That's, that's y'all's discussion.
I think it's six months, because I mean, this is not, not, I.
No, it's, it's, yeah.
I mean, I'll figure a three-sided fence or make it a four-sided.
And I know to the homeowners.
You know, the homeowners could just extend their fence.
Yeah.
They're usually on the side of the house.
Yeah.
So they could extend their fence a little bit to put it behind the fence.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess.
I think three hundred sixty-five days after to get it done is a little long, I mean, I don't know, for David.
Six months.
Yeah, same time.
Well, I'm saying, those that already have it, those three homes that would have to follow compliance, how long do we want to give them to follow compliance and something?
Yeah.
A lot to put in there.
I would say six months, and if they have a question, they can adjust council.
I think that's kind of long.
Okay. Because I have had a lot of calls this week, just the past two days, of everybody asking about what's our rules on generators and what's our rules on propane tanks.
And make one for generators, so not fluffing those one.
No, I mean, that's something, that's alternative fuel, I mean, I, whatever y'all want, are y'all wanting something on the generator? I, I really don't know of any generators that are, usually they put those generators sort of close to the electrical panel, nobody puts their electrical meter at the front of their house.
We might as well tell that generator.
Yeah, and they're all mounted together with it, yeah.
Think up certain rules about generating.
Sorry, I'm done. This is discussion with the council.
I don't. Yeah. I've got to throw those generators in there too, and look and see.
Yeah.
Now, they may have to have so much room to breathe and stuff I don't know about.
Yeah, it would definitely have to be, as long as it complies with state stuff and everything else. We don't want to do anything that puts people out of compliance or at risk or something like that.
So here's a question for you, so, the people with propane, do they have, I mean, does that mean that we let the fire department know which houses are gonna have propane versus electricity? I mean, that's, I mean, with, with it being handy, you're gonna have, that's, it's gonna be a fuel source.
They need to register.
Because they don't need to kind of shut off this.
So do they have a, have to have a permit for that in the future?
Uh, that'd be, I would definitely, you're gonna put a propane tank in, charge the propane, because, I mean, we, we inspect it now, like when they're getting, building an app, causing the plumbing. But, um, yeah, because we had one house that tried to put it right up against a house, it was a big hundred fifty gallon tank.
Doesn't it be pressure tested so often too?
Let me get with, I don't want to lie to.
I would just make sure, I would consider that it's, you know, if it's a.
I'm not a propane tank expert.
I don't think so, I think, people have to, they've had leaks, they've almost got to hire somebody themselves and find the problem themselves and all that. I don't think it necessarily, they would have to come through that. That sounds pretty old out there, it's still filled up, it'd be regular.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, some of the ones I've seen. I just think I want to do is fill that thing up. Okay, so Julie and I will get together on that and come up with something on that for y'all for next month.
So propane and a separate one for generator, or is it all put into?
It'll probably be. We'll try to get it all together in one, but I, what I'm assuming is probably gonna have to be one for propane tanks and another one for generators.
I've seen some counties do it either way. I've seen them do separate one each one, and I've seen them do one big one and just have sectioned, sectioned it out with each thing under that particular section.
Cool.
But they're way off on easiest.
We just want to keep it simple, like, we don't want it to be a container.
So I think we're all in agreement to move forward on that one?
Cool.
Alright, brings us to seven H, discussing consideration of the possibility of selling two city owned lots adjacent to the park.
Uh, yeah, we talked about this last month, y'all asked to get an appraisal, I had John Turner, Turner Appraisal, come in and appraise them. They both, y'all should have all got the copy of the appraisal, um, and that came back, um. I think each one of them was thirty-four thousand dollars, appraised at thirty-four thousand dollars. I know that each one was appraised at thirty-four thousand. Um, now, obviously, there's the one that, on, whatever, I call it North CB Drive, the three hundred, three hundred, two hundred and three. Um, that's so close to the park, it's one of those ones, we really don't want to see another home built there. But we would like to see something, like a community garden, some, something like that done, um, or somebody might just want to buy the land, so nobody builds a house next to them. Um, but when we write the D for that house to be sold, and the D we're definitely gonna put, no home or structure will be built. And talking to John about that, if you're not gonna allow a home to be built there, the value of thirty-four thousand is really not that. Um, so, it would be my recommendation that we start the bids lower on that one, since we're not gonna have a structure built on it. Compared to the one on Royal that, that somebody still chooses to buy, could have a structure on it.
I guess they could give you dollar amount, but there's no structure gonna be built on it, not a dollar amount, other than that.
No, this is just the value of the land as is, and so it shows, that shows thirty-four thousand, and that's under the consideration you're gonna build a home on.
Right.
I would definitely look at starting the, the bid like at twenty thousand for that lot, that's not gonna be built on it, and then go from there. If we don't get anybody to put it in, then we don't sell it, be one of those two. I've just had several people ask about it, and I totally found that one at the back of Royal, my, my thoughts are in the back of Royal, it's easy to put a home. See if we can bring it up. That's those two, that one there on Royal, that's, you know, at the end of the street, on one side and everything else. That other one is right there close to the park, and if we ever, and I would definitely write it into the thing to where if whoever buys that and doesn't build anything on it, if they ever want to get rid of it, the city has the first option to buy it back. Got any thoughts or just discussion on it?
So you want to start with CB one at twenty and Royal at thirty-four?
That's what I would do, that's my recommendations, but y'all do what you want to.
Was there, there was, I just want to make sure there's no agreeing with that, for at the end, house on Royal next to that lot that we're looking at, the house is already built there, there's no, looks like there's that line of trees there, right? And I don't, you know, I'm sure that they knew that it was gonna, that, that, I don't think it was gonna be locked up for twenty years, but. I just make sure there's no big agreement.
There's no easements, no nothing, any of that stuff.
Even before the park happened, these, well, probably these lots over here were, um, non-accessible, they were considered non-accessible. And it was in that whole clump of land that, you know, like four generations later, twelve grandkids on that one piece of property. And so that's probably how that one was for a lot of things.
Yeah.
Too long seconds, is the city on now?
Both of those are.
Okay, that's, so, when did we acquire that one? Did we always have it?
Nope, we got that one in twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen, it was a lady, she owned it forever, and then when she passed, she did, she, I think she did it to the city, Sam can tell you more, I'm almost positive she did, did it to the city.
I was just thinking all of those, and so all along the tree line there, here, is that all city owned property?
That whole thing, every last bit of city owned, I know.
That's how I thought it was, I wasn't sure.
So I see what we acquired.
That's what we had bought now, school bus doesn't turn around anymore.
I don't know.
That's what that was a little, it was built for, the school bus went up there and turned around and came back down, there was never any thing there.
That one on C V, that'd be, we've got a home building actually, but, that'd be a different layout for a house anyways.
So I'll stay corrected, the one on C V we acquired in two thousand and one, and that one right there, that were, the other one at the end of Royal, we acquired in twelve twenty-two nineteen ninety-seven.
Shouldn't we choose to go on and sell these two properties, can we earmark that money?
Yeah, you can definitely, whatever money you make off of it, you can use it for.
I would, I would, I would just like to have a discussion about that, should we move forward by earmark that money for the park on the east side or something like that, where it's somewhat restricted? To make sure that we can go to, to continue and depart projects on, into the east side or something like that, just now, you can discuss that later.
Yeah, um, now, we can't make any action on this because it's not an agenda item, but just to let you know, there's a resident on the east side that two wants to see a park put over there. And he came to me recently with the proposal, um, with two strings attached. Um, he's willing to donate twenty thousand dollars of his own money towards a park on the east side. The two strings are, one, the city has to match its funds, so the city would be responsible for putting in twenty thousand dollars themselves. And two, he would have naming rights to name the park, so if he wanted to name it, whatever.
ABC Park.
Yeah, ABC Park or whatever, if he wanted to name it, park or, he could.
Well, then the city would maintain that?
Yeah, it would still be city property, city, anything else is just, he would help with twenty thousand dollars to get the thing going, but we gotta match his funds. That's obviously something, we could use this money if we sell one of these lots for twenty thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand, whatever we sell the lots for, we could earmark that money to be put towards a park on the east side. If y'all still choose.
So are we looking at, are we gonna start to talk about all the, uh, if we go with the North C V lot, will all restrictions be on that?
Yes, so, right now, the restrictions aren't, no water or sewer, no water or sewer we ran to it, and there is no structure to be built on it.
That's the restrictions right now?
Right now.
So if it's going to be used for.
Water.
The only water is gonna be at the garden.
Yeah, now, Joe Bode has it, he can put a fence up around it, put a lock on it, nobody can get into it or anything else, uh, or he can, do what he want, he just can't build a home on it, and we're not gonna provide water or sewer to it, unless y'all want to change that, that's y'all's decision.
I don't, I don't want to see the parking garage back there.
Yeah, for sure.
Out there at the park.
No.
Is that something that we, we look at as far as on the south side of it, at least having whoever has a bit of fence up there, what I hate, I, I think there needs to be some barriers between this is private property, and this is city owned property. For kids that have a park, wanna be playing on there, I hate for someone to get hurt on that property and they'll be loud before, so I think there needs to be some kind of division that says, this is private property, based on the south side.
Okay. Well, even, I, I think we just have it, have to have it all the way. Down this road too, because that's a C Street, and, you know, people might be confused, it's part of the park.
So property must be used in security somehow?
Yeah, separated out from the rest of it.
But if, if, they're wanting to do the garden, then we're gonna have to do something about that, have water.
No, that's.
If it's gonna be a community garden, everyone in the community, then.
They're gonna have to come up with quite a few ordinances on that.
Yeah.
Or just deed restrictions.
I think you put it in the deed restrictions.
I think that's the same thing.
My only thoughts on, I used to really bid on who buys it and what they want to do with it, if somebody buys it and wants to make it a community garden, I mean, do you want, my thoughts are, don't run water sewer, because, somebody comes over there and leaves the water hose on, and leaves the water running all night, and whoever bought it is gonna be responsible for the water. I mean, but that's something, if y'all wanted to, one or two would be ran to it, isn't that fine?
And working this, who buys it, can they come, ask for a major, certain restrictions, or do we need to stick that all the way through? I guess that's my kind of, I think, one of my questions, just put all restrictions on there unless approved by city council.
I think that's the best way to go.
Is to do what?
All restrictions unless approved by city council. I mean, pretty much it's a, it's a, it's a piece of land, unless approved by city council, it'd be something else with it.
And you can't have a business, you can't build a shop or a barn, anything on an iceboard.
And I mean, you know, thirty years from now, it could change, and we're all, if not here, they might want to let him do something with it, you know? And I hate, you know?
I'm like you, I think there needs to be a fence or a tree line or something, just because there's that big metal barn on the, on that property right there that can become an obstacle right now, and now the trees are sort of covering it up. Keep the, the tree line there and stuff like that, just so this.
Because I blew that disc off before, it blew down that alley too, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, if someone's disc went over there, I just want them to know that it is private property, you know, it's just.
Yeah, I agree.
Julie, is there a way that we can write that up to where pretty much it's just a lot of land unless council approves?
I'm pretty sure there might be some way that we can work that.
You know, any, any kind of change to the, it has to be approved by council.
Yeah, I'm sure there is. And then, and it's possible too, that maybe, you know, if you have people that are wanting to buy it and have bids, you can just bring it back here and see which one is approved. And then depending on what it's gonna be for, then you can also know specifically what you might want to put in there.
Yeah. So draw up all these restrictions, run it in the paper for thirty days, start the bidding at twenty thousand for that one, and then leave it at thirty-four for the other one, since you can build a structure on that.
I think the, the biggest one is the North C V one, or considering North C V, just, and it needs, needs to be some restrictions on that, just because it's, up there. So, say, that number one's for, require a fence, and then any kind of change to it needs to be run by city council.
Yeah.
But for sure, no structure that can ever be built on it, and no water or sewer we ran to it. And then all other changes has to be approved, be approved by council. But put those in, for sure, put those into deed restrictions, and then just anything else, based upon council approval, if council decides to do that way.
Makes sense.
I can't move this one. So let me just straighten, holding with the restrictions on C.
Am I correct? Yeah, I think what we're, what we're looking at is starting at twenty thousand, deed restriction to be no property, no water and sewer, must have some kind of fence, or putting there property, some way, yeah, some way to define the property, is private property, and then all other changes must be approved by council.
I'll make that motion, and then we'll build thirty-four thousand on the, one of them.
Mr. Kennedy makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Davis, second, so it's a discussion between council, all is fair, is aye?
Aye.
If public say no, motion passes. That will bring us to number eight, items, uh, members of the city council, start with Kate. Ms. Carter.
I'm in.
Ms. Kevin.
Only thing I'd like to thank everybody's work this past week, I know it was hectic, and our Sam and the other guys, they, they done a heck of a job keeping us in water, and I don't think everybody realized that.
Yeah.
And Eric as well, but, there was a, there was a lot that went on behind the scenes, definitely appreciate it.
Yeah, you tell, yeah, I definitely, kudos to Sam and Kevin, they were out here, I mean, I don't know if they ever went home. Um, they were out here keeping our water full, we had quite a few issues just with that power at the water tower, uh, just keeping that going. And at the water plant, there's quite a few things going, and so they, they kept it all going, they were up here and they kept it full, we never were short on water or anything, or had to worry about it. Never had, uh, main line breaks or anything like that, so definitely shout out to, um, Sam and Kevin for doing that, Don and Justin, for keeping the streets clean. Um, man, they did a good job on that, and, uh, J R and Services helped us out quite a bit, and did a good job on that. Um, Allison kept everything going for us, uh, answered the phones from home, so definitely thanks to her. And then for y'all, y'all, y'all did so much, I know y'all were calling, what can we do, what can we do, what can we do, and anything I asked y'all were doing. So I definitely appreciate that, and I would love to be on the call, so thank y'all for doing that. Um, definitely to John, the emergency management coordinator, for what he did, um, so yeah, I agree with Brad, there's a lot of stuff on behind the scenes that nobody ever saw, and that took care of the city, and so, it's nice to be a part of a community like this, and so, that's all I got.
Yeah, just saying, um, they felt very, very important.
I've got nothing.
The only I have is to be able to mirror everybody else, uh, it's, it's amazing, I mean, driving from our town into Wissaw Hall, and the residential Wissaw Hall, we see how much our community cares and the roads, and I know, called Eric on Sunday night, and the next thing I know, he's on a backhoe, Sunday night, going into a holiday weekend, uh, preparing intersections out, uh, next to him was a backhoe, whatever it was, some kind of yellow equipment out there.
Yeah, it's a backhoe.
So, um, you know, that, that's the dedication that our city manager has, is, you know, that's how he could have been spent with his family, um, doing many other things on, on, with the city, since it was a holiday weekend, and so I definitely appreciate you and all the guys out there, I know that, uh, numerous times, Sam and Kevin out there, just freezing and working, and John for spending many hours in this building right here, whether we had electricity or didn't, making sure it was ready to go, definitely appreciate that. Um, also to, to Don, I know he was doing plenty of wolf road checks, just not in our area, but also the county, so we appreciate you as well. Um, so just, just the communication between council and the city staff was, it was nice to see that, should something go down, we got it, you know, and so that's always nice, so. Um, I don't have anything else, I do want to remind everybody that next month's council meeting is Bushback Week.
March twenty-third.
Due to spring break, and so, um, I don't have anything else.
Oh, tell you that, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Spring's gonna be here for a while, we need to remind everybody to follow the laws on the law courts. We need to, have access to something down on the billboards, or flyers, or something.
I don't like to see a flyer, I like your idea, I think just send that out to, even if it's, just something that, even if it's a magnet or something, they can put on their fridge or something like that, I don't know what, even if it just, something that'd be fun, but just kind of let them know, hey, these, this is what the state takes into account, and our, and here is that.
We never did a flyer, we did a big social media push on it, uh, and the game board, it gave me all the, sort of the restrictions, it's just a small little card with all the restrictions, you gotta have a driver's license, has to be insured, and has to be registered with Orange County. Maybe do something like that, a small thing, can we put it on the fridge or something like that?
See a golf cart magnet, those are little points on it, you know, something like that, just something that people could just spell it there, or even put a magnet up, they can put it in their golf cart or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's a great idea, just so we can say that we did our part in making people aware, we can enforce the law, but we can at least let people know what the laws are, so.
That, one other, I had a call from individual order about leash laws in the park, which are, need to get that out there, to have a leash.
Oh, yeah, I've had, you talking about dogs on a leash in the park? Yeah, technically, all ordinance is, if your dog steps off, if your pet steps off your property, it has to be on a leash. Can't tell them to front, and then, yeah, I think that's a good thing, that, and picking up after you, or wherever you want. Sure, that's good, those are good things, Brad.
Anything else from anybody else in council? Oh, I think we're through.
Um, just a couple things, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Eric and the events committee, uh, with their help at the warming station. Uh, events committee brought all the goodies, um, so we got a good stockpile now, um, so should be into issues now, we're, we're in a good shape. Uh, the second thing is, just real quick, what does the council feel, or how does the council feel about starting up a storm shelter registration? The V A D does not know where any bloody storm shelters are, and then that we start losing houses, um, collapse, that kind of thing, we need to know where their shelters are actually physically at, so if we do search and rescue, we can kind of pinpoint where these folks are at.
Just get with me, I have all that.
Don't you already have a list?
Yeah, I have all that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it all up to date, is it, I mean, I'll be.
I mean, if somebody's put one in in the past eight months, no.
So we can kind of align folks, and, yeah, and then I'll get that, and I'll get that to the V A D, so we can make sure that we've got that information, that's all I got.
And I will say this, closing, I know, we had some talk about the warming station up here, uh, we were definitely prepared, it was one of those things, we were not prepared to be without power for more than thirty hours. I don't think anybody on this earth was prepared to be with that power for more than thirty hours. Um, so I know as soon as we lost power, the first time it was one of those rolling blackouts, if we lost about three thirty, it came back on about four thirty, and then we lost it again at six, and it was out for a very long time. And it's one of those things, we were working behind the scenes on getting a generator, getting plugs, all that, that stuff is not just, you know, doesn't pop up all of a sudden, it takes time, calling people, we exhausted all resources. And right when we got to the point to where we were ready to open this building with the generator parked out here, and the temporary plugs, and the food, and everything else like that, the power came back up on. And then we posted several times, hey, it's ready, there's power there, if y'all want to come, call them, he put his personal number on it. So I, I think everybody had every opportunity, we never had one person call us, come up here and want one thing, so nobody ever, it was on all of our social media sites, people knew. And I had several people calling me, hey, when's the power gonna be restored, I said, I, I can't tell you, that's on the fourth, but if you need a place to go, we have a place to go, and everybody, no, we're fine, our neighbors help us out, and so.
I had one older couple call while we were getting set up, and I said, just give us, you know, about hour or two, and once we're set up, I'll give you a call right back. And, I mean, it was hilarious, it was kind of funny, and we were just, we needed, during the generator, and the lights came on, and I called those folks back, and they said, yeah, we've got heat, and, and we're ready to go, so, uh, those folks were all set, so. The timing was excellent.
Yeah, I mean, we had plugs, extension cords, everything in here. And Sam and Kevin, we started up, we even had a generator running, and then all, the electrician was up here fixing to wire it in, and all of a sudden, everything like that.
The events committee was gonna bring out pizza for dinner, and it was, it was gonna be a good community moment, but luckily it all came on, so.
Well, I don't know, you just, basically, we have plenty of citizens who are just very pursuit of y'all's health and getting the word out.
It was a big team effort.
Yeah, it was truly neighbors help the neighbors, and that's, and that's why we look for that a hundred percent.
Agreed.
All right, is there something else, are there any other questions to adjourn? Like most of the adjournments, just somebody makes the motion? Mr. Carter, second, so discuss between council, all is fair, say aye.
Aye.
Close in.